All right, Director.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
I think we are at 9:01. Everybody's trying to get online, and so please, please proceed. I think probably while I'm trying to get on, it makes sense to go ahead and do a roll call.
Will do, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Resinas?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer?
Excused.
Commissioner Pope?
Here.
Commissioner Wallace?
Here.
Excused, I guess. I guess excused.
And Chairman Gordon?
I am here.
Which means, Mr. Chairman, you do have a quorum.
We do.
A bit of a skeleton crew.
Just.
And we will follow up to make sure we get in touch with the others and make sure that they are able to join. So in the interim, I will make my quick announcements. Today is a special meeting of the Commission for the specific purpose of reviewing public comments received regarding the proposed reserved management rule set and to adopt the final rules for promulgation with any non-substantive changes. As such, this intended to be a brief meeting, and there will be no public comment today. Agendas and sign-in sheets are outside the room, so if you are here and present physically, please do fill that out. And I will read off my disclaimer. Key decisions pertaining to the Wyoming Stable Token Initiative will be made by the Commission of the Commissioners of the Stable Token Commission or the state legislature in public meetings such as this. Further, the only Commissioners are those appointed by statute, the governor, or a majority vote of the Commission. At this time, Wyoming stable tokens are not available for purchase. Prototype tokens with no backing reserves and therefore no financial value have been issued on test nets of the Ethereum, Solana, Avalanche, Arbitrum, Base, Optimism, and Polygon blockchains. These are for testing purposes only, and smart contract addresses are published on our website. As such, any website or platform claiming to sell or distribute Wyoming stable tokens should be considered fraudulent. Please do not attempt to perch in tokens from unauthorized sources. Information outside of these public meetings should only be considered factual and legitimate if it is distributed through our official channels. At this time, these are limited to our website at stabetoken.yo.gov, the Wyoming Legislature website at yoleg.gov, and our social media channels with the @Wyostable username on Twitter, YouTube, GitHub, and Warp Cast. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to tell you what the agenda is. We'll talk briefly about smart contract redeployment for maybe about 60 seconds, and then we will get into our July 2025 rulemaking update memo and take it from there.
Without objection, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in terms of our smart contract redeployment, I want to just kind of quickly recap. We did deploy smart contracts on seven of our nine candidate blockchains back in March through our partnership with Layer Zero. Those again were Ethereum, Solana, Avalanche, Arbitrum, Base, Optimism, and Polygon. In mid-May, Fireblocks, who we had engaged at that point in time for blockchain infrastructure, had announced that they would be integrating with Layer Zero specifically to facilitate the issuance of stable coins using the Layer Zero OmniChain fungible token standard. So all that to say, they are now somewhat unifying their structure. And as we've, as we have engaged both of them, we have been working towards redeploying our smart contracts for the Wyoming stable tokens with kind of feature completeness on that unified infrastructure. So we confirmed yesterday that the Wyoming Stable Token smart contracts have been redeployed on the seven blockchain test nets that I just mentioned. We are going to, and that allows us to kick off our user acceptance testing, so we'll restart that process as well as move forward on our alpha program as well as our pilot program, which is again with Wyoming residents and Wyoming domiciled entities that are looking to utilize Wyoming stable tokens. And then we will subsequently begin our research and investigations towards deploying other candidate blockchains on that infrastructure. I will pause there for any questions, but I wanted to just quickly just give a progress update on the technical components here before we get into the legal side of things.
Are there any? I hear none. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have one memo to cover today with a few supporting documents behind it, and this is our July 2025 rulemaking update memo. So in summation, what we're going to do is just quickly provide an update on the procurement rules, which are currently with the Management Council, the Wyoming Public Records Act rules, also with Management Council, and then we'll have a more substantive discussion on public comment received on reserves management, which is the bigger piece here and more specific to the stable token itself rather than, let's say, agency operations. So again, just to recap, again, the hope is for an action today to adopt the final reserves management rules for regular rulemaking as drafted following the public notice and comment period. We do have a statutory authority to promulgate our own rule sets as an agency through Wyoming statute 40-31-105 subsection B. And if the Commission does not want to move forward with the rules as presented today, we could either perform additional non-substantive edits, or if we do need to perform substantive edits, that would kind of put us back to the top of the process and restart that. Again, we just have our citations here for that piece of statute, that the Commission shall adopt rules and regulations as necessary to administer this act and to ensure compliance with all applicable state and federal law. And then we can start moving into our rule sets. So first is procurement. Again, the background here is we were authorized to create rules around our own procurement process through the amendments to the Stable Token Act in 2024. I've cited those references here. We moved forward with regular rulemaking, which was approved by the Commission and subsequently approved by the governor to move forward. On April 11th of 2025, we had a 45-day notice and comment period that ended May 27th. No comments were received on the procurement rules, so the Commission then approved the final procurement rules without any changes by unanimous vote during the regular meeting we had on May 30th. I then went and uploaded that procurement rules package to the WARS system, which is the Wyoming administrative rule system managed by the Secretary of State's office. Those rules were reviewed by LSO. They did not have any material findings, and we did talk about this the last meeting, but those findings were submitted to the Management Council on June 17th. Once the Management Council has a chance to perform its own review, they will provide their feedback to the governor, who has the ultimate determination of whether those procurement rules will move forward or if there needs to be adjustments and we need to revisit the process. So as such, those are still pending Management Council's review. There are no actions required by the Commission at this time, so there is no recommendation from my side. But again, wanted to just run through that process and provide a quick update and answer any questions that the Commission might have.
Questions? Commissioner Pope? Any? None?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pope?
My apologies. I was just, I was answering you, Mr. Chairman, saying none for me.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will have kind of a similar review of the public records rules. So again, this is our rules pertaining to the Wyoming Public Records Act and fees associated with the production of any records that are requested by the, to the agency under the WPRA. We did receive, and again, they had very much the same timeline as the procurement rules. We had received one comment from one individual, which did not result in any substantial or non-substantial changes to those rules. The Commission approved the final public rules, sorry, the final public records request rules without any changes or substantive or non-substantive by unanimous vote during its regular meeting on May 30th. Again, went through the WARS platform and Secretary of State's office, see it in front of the Legislative Services Office. They reviewed it, no material findings. Now sitting with Management Council ahead of submission to the governor for the ultimate determination of whether those rules should or should not be promulgated. As such, there is no actions required by the Commission at this time, no recommendation from my side. Any questions on the WPRA rules?
Any questions? I hear none. Director, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So now moving on to the more substantive part of the conversation, the reserves management rules. I'll give you a bit of the preamble, then we'll get into the public comments received. So this is one of the key rule sets we are looking to put forth, which will govern how the Commission handles the dollars that come in for the issuance of Wyoming stable tokens and the return of those dollars at the point of redemption. Again, to be specific, this is on the financial side of the equation while we are working on the token treatment rules around the technical elements, which will be presented at our next meeting on the 17th. The Commission approved a draft of those rules on April 17th, which was forwarded to the governor's office and approved to move forward on May 13th. That again went through the same process of being uploaded to the Secretary of State system, and then that kicked off the 45-day notice and comment period on May 14th and completed on this Monday, June 30th at 5:00 p.m. So as part of that public comment period, we did receive three comments through the portal, the online portal through our website, from one individual, and we'll address those. And then separately, we did receive a letter from the Wyoming Bankers Association to the Commission office. I will be specific that this arrived outside of the online submission process requested in an unsealed envelope and not actually addressed to the Commission. That being said, we have attached that letter and looked to address it below as a good faith effort here. So unless there's any questions, we can get into the substance of the comments and take these on piece by piece. Again, our responsibility as an agency is to review these comments either as stated or in summation, and then provide a response to the commenter and also determine whether or not we believe any comment should result in a substantive or non-substantive change. Again, non-substantive things may be, you know, small grammatical nits or things of that nature. Substantive changes where we would actually change clauses to the rules or any kind of operations therein would require us to kind of restart the process to a certain extent. So what I've done here is broken down for the comments received by, on the website, I've broken down each comment individually. We'll, we'll go through those one by one as well as the suggested responses, and we'll leave it to the Commission to determine whether or not any substantive or non-substantive changes may be required. And then for the commentary received from the Wyoming Bankers Association, we'll address that subsequently because that, I did take some of that at the summary level because there is some redundancy between the feedback and the suggested response. And then for anything that was more specific, we've broken those out separately. So again, unless there's any questions from a procedural standpoint, I'm happy to proceed on that. And I would like to point out that Commissioner Revell has joined.
Welcome, Commissioner Revell. Any, any comments? Any questions? Okay. Director, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So regarding the commentary on the website, and this is page five of the docket for our Commissioners, public comment received was the rules in chapter one are inadequate for a new agency that has undertaken one of the riskiest ventures in state history. The rules for service provider vetting, account holder procedures and policies and investment holdings and reserve procedures are inadequate, vague, and too far too much authority is given to the Director. The new agency's commission has undertaken a publicly funded startup and extending more and more powers and authority to the Director. No disrespect intended, but because the Director is surrounded by those who only endorses endeavors, it's my opinion he doesn't see the risk to public funds. The rules in this section give decision-making authority to the Director or his appointees without day-to-day accountability by elected financial officers. These rules are not extensive enough. All traditional financial service providers have multiple required sign-offs by officers, especially in handling account holder funds or making decisions around these. These rules need to be much more robust, taking the lead of our traditional banking and finance rules in order to provide safety and soundness for public money. More oversight from the traditional finance industry and day-to-day accountability is necessary overall, especially when this endeavor is underwritten with public dollars. So again, that's the public comment on chapter one of our, and sections two, three, and four of our reserves management rules, which again you should have in front of you. To be clear, on chapter one in those sections, section two is just the purpose of the rules. Section three is definitions. But section four, where I believe a lot of this commentary is pointed at, is the limited delegation of fiscal authority, wherein the Commission hereby agrees to delegate to the Director the limited authority to, and then we have a host of different abilities. I will note that the Director may delegate some portion of these responsibilities to Commission staff, which is defined within these rules essentially the C-suite. Any authority granted in this section may be limited by the Commission pursuant to control procedures. And if any authority granted in this section may be, I believe, let's see if we have this here. Yeah. Yeah, so that's the, so C and D are the limitation of the authority as well. So in terms of the suggested response, and I'll just kind of read through these, and if I need to summarize them, please just do, let me know going forward. Regarding the scope and detail of rules, per Wyoming statute 16-3-101 subsection A, Roman et 9, rules are not intended to be all encompassing in terms of agency operations, but rather a quote "statement of general applicability." And that's from statute. Rules should be more specific than statute, but granular processes are intended to be covered by policies and procedures put forth and approved by the agency in conformance with said rules and having isolated applicability. Per the Commission's regular meeting on June 19th of 2025, Director Apollo discussed the many policies that must be approved prior to the launch of the token. For example, a know-your-business document that will guide the vetting of service providers who wish to be resellers of Wyoming stable tokens. Director Apollo noted these documents will be presented at the regular meeting of the Commission on July 17th of 2025. Regarding the authority of the Director, many agencies have authority granted to their respective Director by statute. For example, Wyoming statute 9-2-3203 specifies the powers of the Director for the Department of Administration information. In contrast, the Stable Token Act at Wyoming statute 40-31-105 at sequence delegates authority to the Commission. The Commission is composed of three elected officials and four appointed subject matter experts, who then delegate authority as appropriate and within compliance with state law to the Director. As such, there is built-in oversight over the Director of the Commission. Additionally, critical policies like terms and conditions for Wyoming stable tokens will require Commission approval before they can be managed by the Director or Commission staff on an ongoing basis, and that's section four, subsection A, Roman et four of the rules that we're talking about. Further strengthening supervision. So I, you know, have here, the Commission does not believe any non-substantive or substantive changes to the rules required based on this comment, but again, I will leave that to the Commission for discussion.
Are there, are there comments on this? Director, there, one is a, just a question and perhaps a housekeeping. C and D appear to be identical. Is there a reason for the repetition? This is in section four. A, B, C, C and D appear to be identical provisions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that, and that's why I started filming a little bit, because I was trying to see if there was a difference there. I think that might just be a copy-paste error.
Okay.
I want to just take, if I have a moment, just check and make sure we capture that correctly. I do believe that should probably be just deleted, which I think would just be a non-substantive change.
Sure.
Because just a duplicated clause, but I would appreciate just 60 seconds to double-check that.
Sure.
And of course, hear any other comments in the interim. So, Mr. Chairman, I am seeing that in prior versions of the document as well. That just might be a clause that was inadvertently duplicated and remained in. I would be quite open to deleting it as part of the process here before we move forward with this, and I would consider that to be a non-substantive change because again, the clause already exists, but I'm happy again to take any commentary or feedback on that path forward.
Okay. Well, and we might, we might consider that. The second piece of it was the commenter spoke of underwritten with public dollars. And, and I think the legislature appropriated some dollars that help stand this up, but I think that, and if, if there is a conception somehow that there are public dollars that are going to support this effort, I just wanted that you'd have a chance to, beyond simply the administrative matters that are here, wanted you to have a chance to talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and well taken. So for this comment specifically on chapter one, I chose to interpret that pretty broadly, this effort, this agency is underwritten with public dollars, right? Functionally, right? We are, we are using taxpayer dollars to get this off the ground. Of course, our intent is to repay those public dollars, but if we were to take that comment more broadly, I would, I would categorize that as accurate. I don't think that's necessarily a criticism or, you know, something we need to address. I mean, I think this kind of just on its face, we are. There is a separate comment on chapter four, I believe, that we'll get to momentarily from the same commenter, where they talk about dollars in the trust account and characterize those as public funds, and I have addressed that because I don't believe that's accurate. But if we're to interpret this comment broadly, which I think is the spirit of what we're doing here, I would say, yes, we are underwritten with public dollars. Yes, that, that does mean we do have some fairly high level of oversight and transparency required, but I think we've accomplished that. We meet monthly, more than monthly, in discussions like this. We are overseen by several elected officials. We are transparent with our financials and the spend. We've spent less than, you know, per our last month, less than a million dollars. So I think the fiscal conservatism is certainly built into this, and I think that's less than we would address in, in rulemaking, more of a philosophical element here.
I, I would probably interpret things the same. I just wanted a testimony to kind of clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, and I'm looking at Jeff because I think he might be able to help answer this question, and I feel like I maybe tried to ask something similar at the last meeting, maybe didn't do it. I'm looking at section four, Romanet six, which talks about deposits, withdrawals, payments, and transfers of funds, which is, I think, a concern expressed by maybe both And I, gosh, we don't have anybody from the Treasury's office here, but it, but it would seem unusual in any circumstance to me that one individual is able to move big chunks. Oh, we do have somebody from the Treasury's office here. Thanks, Norm. I mean, when you're moving, so maybe the question is for you, and you can nod or shake your head, when, when, when funds, when millions of dollars of funds are being moved in or out of an investment account, does that take a dual signature? Yeah, and, and I don't know if Jeff would have had anything to add, but that's, that's one I tend to sort of agree with, that, that we're going to be talking large dollars, and I, I don't know that, I mean, if all other state agencies are having sort of two, two, at least a second person to make those big transactions, I, I don't see that as unreasonable. But again, I would look to Jeff to maybe, because one of the comments in particular is like, this is done in the, the banking world when they have to move large blocks of money. Is that your understanding, Commissioner Wallace?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. You know, it really depends on the account agreement and the entity that's setting it up. So the bank operates based on whatever agreement is, is contracted with. So as far as multiple signatures, that's usually determined by the entity that owns the account. As far as, you know, like a standard bank procedure, you know, if you're moving bank money in and out, generally, yeah. I mean, if there's certain dollar limits that would require more than one approval, typically, you know, done with wire transfers or whatever, so there's usually multiple, multiple levels of approval with, say, a wire. So I'd say as far as the banking industry goes, large, large transactions or transfers would require more than one approval.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to gum up the process, but I just, you know, we are going to be talking in pretty big zeros, and I think that moving that money around probably should have, you know, if it's a couple thousand bucks, no big deal, but it could be 100 million.
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree with that, Commissioner. And it does appear to me that, that that would be a good addition somewhere, and I think multiple signatures really should not complicate.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think what, one of the things that we kind of need to focus on is what needs to be in rules, the actual rules we're promulgating. And then on the second side of that, what needs to be in a control document that will also be and required to have approval by the Commission? I think if you look at probably the, and Jeff can, Commissioner Wallace can correct me if I'm wrong, but a, if you look at the Wyoming Banking Commission rules, I don't think they specify how many signatures have to be on an account at an individual bank, but what they do say is that there has to be an adequate control environment in which those, those banks operate. And so what, what, if we have to put something in rule about that, then it, then it would be something to the effect of the, that transfers would be made subject to a control environment approved by the Commission as opposed to designating in detail what has to happen, which then, if we have to change that down the road, we have to go through this procedure all over again. So I'd caution us to, to maybe not try and put the micromanagement into the rules themselves, but create a situation where we maintain the, the proper oversight. And then this, my second comment is that when you look at the, the flow of funds, which will be identified at, you know, through our operating, operating procedures, we basically have three accounts. We have the investment account, which will hold the treasuries. We have a redemption account, which will hold cash, and the flow between those two accounts will be automatic. Then it'll be subject to, to procedures that we set up with the institution that, that handles those, and those are in trust, which, that also addresses another issue in that, that we're going to talk about in a moment, and they are not public funds, and they will be overseen by very probably a fiduciary trust, trust manager. So I, you know, that's, that's something that, that we will have very little control over. Then the other account will be an operational account that excess funds over and above the 2% that, that we have designated by statute will flow into that very probably also automatically. So I mean, it's, this is something where we're going to have, a lot of the flow will be be managed, and we will have the ability to approve the, the procedures for that ahead of time. And then the question for the Commission is what level of granularity, what micromanagement goes in the rules themselves? And I think that right now, given that we have the ability to, to, to approve the, the actual procedures later on, I think we have enough ability within the rules to continue with what, and to properly oversee the process.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Pope. I'm, I'm going to lean to Commissioner Wallace just a second on, on that. Yeah, you know, I think Commissioner Pope's point about policy is, is a valuable one. And it seems to me that most banking institutions have policies like that that are, that are relatively enumerated, and they can be addressed at times. So the two weaknesses, I, I, I think the Commissioner Rosinas' point's well taken because I think this, just reading it blankly, the commenter's point's well taken. But, but perhaps it's more cumbersome to put this in rule, but we would probably want to talk to a control sort of document. And it also seems to me that it might be valuable to have in rule that, you know, the, the Commission will regularly review all transfers. Just your, your thoughts, Commissioner Wallace?
I, I, I agree with that. I guess the question is, to me, would be, though, as far as the custodian of the funds, I mean, to me, that's kind of their responsibility is to, to be reviewing those transfers and, and making sure they have multiple levels of authority to do that. And so I think our review would be more of a review of the custodian's rules that they, they have in place and, and what controls they're using to limit, you know, one person being able to transfer those funds. But I can't, I guess, my understanding, I just don't understand where our director or the Commission would be really responsible for moving a majority of the money back and forth. That, that would be what we're hiring the custodian for. So I think as a Commission, we would probably be wise to review their controls and their procedures. And I, I think, you know, adding something to the rules might be a little bit too micromanagement for that, but having something in there that we do review the custodian's procedures is probably a good move, in my opinion.
Thank you. Other, other commissioners, Director?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the dialogue here. I do want to highlight that this is a little bit of a replay of the conversation we had in our prior meeting. So first and foremost, right, the Commission has already delegated the responsibility to open accounts to the Director and the CFO, right? That's intended to help us get things off the ground with our reserves management counterparties, again, at this time expected and in open negotiations with Franklin Advisors for Investment Management as well as fiduciary trusts under the Franklin Aegis for custody. In addition to that delegated authority, one of the documents that was shared at our June 19th meeting was the finance and accounting policy that our CFO, Joseph Saldana, is working on, where these very granular thresholds and authorities are being put forth. And I think that is kind of hearkening to the comment here, which is, I think, the general thrust of it, I think we're all in agreement with, we need oversight, controls, thresholds. I don't think anyone's arguing against that. I think this is simply a discussion and a determination of where that content is, is lies, right? Is it part of the rules where we need to go down that path of putting limitations in here, which we really haven't done anywhere else in the document? Or if the Commission is comfortable with that manifesting in a finance accounting policy that is fairly robust, broken down by account, broken down by agency, resource, and by dollar threshold? And again, this is one quick last note, sorry, Mr. Chairman. We do expect to have that, you know, for approval at our next meeting on the 17th of this month.
Correct. Yeah. And, and Director, my, you know, my only point is, I think the, the rules here, I agree. It really is more, it, it's more of a acknowledgement that this Commission will have regular reporting is really what I'm more, to me, to me, that, that can be appropriate to the rules because it's, it's essentially saying that this Commission has to do it. Policies would, would change from time to time. Madam.
No, I think that the, the after the fact piece is important, but, and I, I think the reason I'm honing in on Romanet 6 is those things are done. You know, we can review after the fact, but just from a fiduciary standpoint, you know, someone, and again, we're always trying to future proof this, if future Anthony, because I know current Anthony would never do this, but like, if a future someone could, could prove up with the bank that I have, I have the authority to remove 100 million dollars and close the account, and it's right here. And so I'm wondering if, and I, I don't think this would be a substantive change because this is already referenced down in Section C, if we could do something just like at the end of that, Romanet 6, in accordance with control procedures established by the Commission. I know that's a, again, I know that's already stated below, but below, it says, we, we can, we can't, we may, we may put stuff into place. It doesn't say we have to. But then that way, anyone reading this, members of the public, of, of course, which is what we're reviewing today, would say, okay, yeah, he has the authority, but there's other, there's other documents and regulations in play here.
And, and Commissioner, I, you know, I, I tend to agree, but I also think that may be appropriate for Romanet 5, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I actually.
Five and?
Yeah, five and six, yes. And again, that would just, that, that way, we're not tied to any policy and can review those thresholds and change those thresholds without going into rules. But then that's a statement that it's, it's, you know, that there are other, there are going to be other procedures that manage that process.
Thoughts, comments, and other commissioners? Director, any of your staff, any, any thoughts?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Pope?
I would think something like that would be a nonsubstantive change because it doesn't actually change the policy or the, the, the underlying rule. And so I, I would have no, no issue with that because that's just a clarification of a somewhat unclear, of somewhat unclear language. So I, I, I think that would be not a bad, a bad thing, and, and I'm anxious to hear Director Apollo's thoughts on it.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Pope, thank you. I, I would be open to that. I am, you know, I think we would need perhaps the commissioners or potentially a resident from the Aegis Office to help with the determination of whether something is or is not a substantive change. But I would be more than open to adding for the wording roughly from Romanet 2, provided they are in conformance with the Commission's procurement rules in that section. But for Romanet 5 and 6, for Romanet 5, something along the lines of open, close, manage, and transfer monies from trust accounts, liquidity fund accounts, or WIS administration accounts, comma, provided they are in conformance with the Commission's controls, procedures, policies. And then same, same addition on Romanet 6. I would be more than open to that, and again, I think that would help move us forward here.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Monger.
Mr. Chair, and so, you know, we talk about nonsubstantive. The way we actually look at it is, is that logical outgrowth, which is a federal concept of rules, but it's what we use. And I think this is well within the logical outgrowth, especially considering that there are new rules and all of these things are sort of considered within the comments. So I think you're fine to make that change today and have it as part of your adoption of the final rules.
Great. And Ms. Monger, before you, before you leave.
I have a lot of questions.
The other question, I, I think that Commissioner Rosinas has got all kinds of questions she has indicated. But, but I, I guess I'm also wondering about incorporating a regular reporting to the Commission of activities within this section or some language like that, if that is also logical outgrowth.
Mr. Chair, I think that would be still within the logical outgrowth because you, what you have is a new set of rulemaking that you're doing to address this topic. So when we look at is this a logical outgrowth, all of this is sort of on the table, and people should have been aware that we were doing these things. So I think that's within the logical outgrowth. I think what Commissioner Wallace said is exactly correct, which is, you know, the, the Commission's duty is not to necessarily be the experts on this, but to make sure that you're properly overseeing the people who you have doing these things for you. And so whatever that might look like in terms of language, just to bring you all comfort that, that you're meeting that obligation, I think would probably be within the, the logical outgrowth for your rules.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosinas?
Yeah, maybe, and, Mr. Chairman, I know how much you love to draft on the fly, but maybe something, so C, we have C that, that clarifies and limits the above section, or this section. Maybe D could be, any actions taken under the delegated authority in this section shall be reported at the next regular meeting of the Commission?
Director Apollo?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and, and Commissioner Rosinas, thank you for the comment as well. I do want to point out that while we're talking about delegated authority here, there is specificity in Chapter 3, Section 4, Subsection E, and then the Romanets they're under. The Director or Commission staff shall report to the Commission during each instance of a recurring regular meeting, which we currently have monthly. The status of the trust account, liquidity fund account, and WIS administration account that report shall include but is not limited to, and then a recommendation to move funding around as we are permitted to do within that kind of cascade, right? So.
What page is that on?
That's going to be Page 3-3.
3-3?
Yes.
And it's which citation?
This is going to be, it's subsection E, and then the Romanets they're under as well, where we talk about the transfer of funds. So again, let's keep in mind that the trust account is statutorily defined, right? That's one-to-one trust for the benefit of the, the token holder. The liquidity fund account is that required 2% over collateralization. Again, we do have a carve-out in here saying the Commission can vote to move that number up if there needs to be more reserves. And then beyond that, once we actually have that interest income coming in, we're sufficiently reserved and whatnot, then the funds can start flowing. That's where we can determine how much money should stay in the operational account, or if we should move X portion of that interest income into the school foundation program. So again, there are some, there is, and again, E is about the, the monthly reporting at the regular monthly, the regular meetings. So I do think we may have some coverage about what's being discussed in the rules already.
And Director, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, with that. What I think caused me some reason to think about the auditor's suggestion is the parenthetic S. So we have open, close, and manage transfer monies from trust account, parenthetically S, and, and, and the other citation, I, it's, it's a little more broad in, in the first, and in the second, it, it, it speaks, it also has some S's around it, but my, my biggest concern is that, why didn't you know that account was established? Again, not something you would do, but something people might want to be assured wouldn't happen.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I also think that, that's helpful, and that's good to know, but that wouldn't cover any of the changes to any policies, processes, procedures.
Correct.
Entering, renegotiating, or terminating written agreements, or anything like that.
So I'm happy to, I don't see the inclusion of your language as being in anything, in any way, anything but helpful.
And, and again, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I think these are things that are, are going to be told to us anyway, but this way, again, we're just, we're protecting the entire process.
So if it's appropriate, I would, I would ask for a second on the, on the Commissioner Rosinas'.
Well, I guess I better move it first. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move at the end of, in Section 4, little A, Romanet, at the ends of Romanet 5 and 6, at the end of each of those, in accordance with control procedures established by the Commission.
Let's, let's, let's start with that.
Okay.
Is there support for that?
Seconded.
Then seconded, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that carries, nays? I don't hear any nays.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Under Section 4, little, I would move to remove all the language under subsection D and replace it with the following. Any actions taken under the delegated authority within this section shall be reported to the Commission at its next regular meeting.
Is there support for that motion?
I would second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wallace. Is there discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nays? That motion carries. Thank you. Director, I think back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for, for the dialogue. I think, you know, with the work we're doing, there's no issues on our team's side by, by really bolstering the amount of oversight and controls here. I mean, we think we'd do it anyway, but we want to make sure that it stays that way, and that's fine by me. And I will speak for the team on, on their behalf, too, for that one, so thank you. I think that will put us into our second comment that we received online. I think we could go through this one relatively quickly because I think we've just addressed it. So the public comment is on Chapter 3, Section 2. It isn't clear in the document who has authority assigners on the trust accounts or who is able to access these accounts. This needs to be clearly stated, as these are ultimately under the oversight of public officials, therefore requiring a higher standard of oversight. My suggested response would be, as voted by unanimous decision at the regular meeting of the Commission on June 19th, 2025, the Executive Director and Chief Financial Officer were granted authority to open the accounts required to effectuate the issuance and redemption of WIS. These roles are reflected and defined in the reserves management rules as the Director and Commission staff respectively. As discussed in that same meeting, a finance and accounting policy is expected to be presented at the July 17th, 2025, regular meeting of the Commission in which additional signing authority and thresholds will be established. Now, we may want to add some language about the changes that we've just brought forth, which I am fine with. Essentially, I think we just acknowledge that we've added control procedures for the Romanet 5 and- Romanate five and six, as well as disclosures of any actions taken under those at the monthly meetings, and I would believe that would be sufficient personally.
Comments on the director's statement? Yeah, I'm sorry. Who was that?
David. Commissioner Pope.
Yes, Commissioner Pope. Good to see.
Okay. So I think that the response, at the very least, has to state that we did believe certain non-substantive changes were warranted, and we have taken that action. So we do need to amend the suggested response to take care of that. Second thing is, I think I need to probably, again, talk about the role of the trust account because once we establish that trust account, we, I don't, we don't really give up control, but it isn't our, what's in the trust account isn't our money at all. It's not public funds. It is the, it's funds that are essentially owned by the token holders, and that trust account is, whenever you do that, and again, Mr. Wallace can, or Commissioner Wallace can correct me if I'm wrong, but we give up a little bit of our control over that account. We cannot invade that account. We cannot, we have to manage it, or we have to provide oversight, but we can't invade that account. And the distributions from that account will be made by the trust contract that's created as part of this. So I think that is maybe a little bit of a correction to the commenter's perception of this, in that there will be many levels of oversight on this because the fiduciary will carry responsibility for managing that side of the account under the rules or under the contract that we create with them. And maybe Commissioner Wallace can add to that, but I think that might be a little bit of a misperception in this case, that we will have any ability at all just to invade those funds, which we won't.
I can, I can address that a little bit as well, too, because, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Pope in that the trust agreement will limit what the actual commission can do with those funds, and as far as dispersing those funds, that will all be the responsibility of the custodian. I hate to liken it to like a spendthrift trust in a bank, but, you know, it's going to prevent the grantor from coming in and pulling that money out for something that's not part of the original trust agreement. So I agree with Commissioner Pope's statements.
Thank you, Commissioner. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Commissioner Pope and Wallace for their commentary. I was, just wanted to make sure we're closing the loop on Chapter three, Section two, and we're not on the next comment, which is regarding the dollars in trust. Again, this comment was based on a perception that the dollars in the trust account were public funds, which they are not. So I'm just trying to make sure we're talking about the same comment here and not jumping ahead, I guess.
Let me, let me ask. That was my impression. I think the issue of the public funds issue was a separate discussion that we kind of joined a little bit earlier, but maybe on a visit finally at the end, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Pope?
Yeah, and my apologies, but in the Chapter three, Section two, public comment, it isn't clear who has the authority assigners on the trust accounts or who is able to access these accounts. And so that's when we are starting to, and we're starting to discuss that trust account. So I wanted to make sure that we answered that question, the authority assigners or who is able to access those accounts. So that's, that was the reason I brought this part of the discussion into it now.
Thank you, Commissioner Pope. That's the way I understood it. Further comments? Further comments? All right. If there is nothing more on that, we can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we will proceed just to this final comment on Chapter four, Section four. Reading this verbatim, "It seems that these dollars are being redeemed under state authority and ultimately public funds until being dispersed. Redemption to the service provider should have a waiting period regardless for due diligence and administrative review by the director, but also an oversight committee prior to dispersing state funds." So again, I think in this particular comment, there's a misconception that the dollars that are held in trust, as we've been discussing, are the state's monies, which they are not. These are the dollars that are held on the benefit, as the citizen's response says, "The funds being referenced in Section four are for the benefit of token holders, i.e. the end users of Wyoming stable tokens, and are therefore not public funds. Therefore, we do not find this comment to be applicable to the specified clause." And again, I'm happy to revise that if there's need to do so, but I just want to make sure that we're addressing, you know, what those dollars actually represent.
Thank you. And Ms. Monger, I don't know if you want to opine on any of this.
Mr. Chair, no. I think that's the appropriate response, that these funds are held for the benefit of specific token holders. They're not held for the benefit of the public.
And it seems to me the statute was pretty clear on that obligation.
Yeah.
Thank you. Director.
Thank you. Realizing we had carved out an hour for this, and we're about at that hour, we'll hop into the next piece here, which looks longer, but I think might be summarized more quickly. Again, we did receive a letter from the Wyoming Bankers Association. This has been provided to the commission, it's also on the site as part of the public comment process. Again, I wanted to summarize here because there's a number of sections that are listed which have generally comments about the brevity of the rules, or, again, specific questions on procedural steps, granular procedural steps, that would be addressed in policy. So in regards to the brevity of these rules and comparisons to the European Union's markets and crypto asset regulation framework for oversight of the entire digital market, I would have suggested response, the first part being pretty much the same as we had on the first comment that we received on the website, which is regarding the scope and detail of the rules. Rules are not intended to be all-encompassing, but rather a statement of general applicability. And then I've added the same context about the fact that we're going to have all of these policies. We discussed that in the last meeting. And again, we expect that these policies are, will address many of the comments delivered by the WBA. I've also added that any analysis of the commission's rules should be made on a relative basis. Comparing rules for a state agency that govern one portion of stable token issuance to a multinational framework governing all digital assets and the issuers and regulators thereof is not an accurate comparison, and I do not believe any changes would be required based on those comments taken in their totality.
Are there comments or matters? Commissioner Rosinas?
Mr. Chairman, I would just maybe, maybe state that a little bit differently. Instead of saying your comparison was wrong, I'd just more emphasize this is only one set of rules when there's going to be many. And I think maybe also, while this wasn't asked for, those policies are all going to be public as well, right? And so maybe some reference to those as well. Because yes, if this were, if this was our only rule set, I would, you know, and this is what we have out right now, so I can maybe see why, but, you know, clarifying that this is just one of 800 pieces that we will be approving.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there other, other comments? I would note, first off, I want to thank the Bankers Association for their attention here and their suggestions and helpful suggestions at that. There feels to be a bit more of a sort of conversational aspect to this. I know on the, I think it's probably the third page, under Chapter two, Section three, issuance of Wyoming stable token, it kind of walks through some concerns that bankers seem to highlight, but then it asks the question, you know, if these things are put through a DeFi app, will, you know, what gives us confidence that they'll agree to the terms and conditions? And it seems to me that those kinds of things are related to the negotiations we're going to have, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, there are a couple of specific things we do address as well here, and that is one of them. So we can, if, I mean, again, if there's, the first comment was really meant to address the repeated notes on brevity, coverage, and like I said, I'm not going to opine on kind of the conversational tone. I think there are some things personally in this document that are less comment on a clause and more it's an open-ended question, and, you know, I have spoken to the members of the Wyoming Bankers Association, and I'm more than happy to continue those conversations. So if there's no other questions, I'm happy to continue going through the more specific feedback of this.
Sure.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's two references to, in this document, to the permitted investments we have in regards to, and I'm quoting here, Congress's current proposals, in addition to things like maturity dates and the composition of reserves, acknowledging that the Genius Act is still moving through the congressional process versus a response that at this time, Wyoming statute that governs the composition of WIST reserves is law. Assuming the comments refer to the guiding and establishing national innovation for the U.S. Stable Coins or Genius Act, which has been delivered by the Senate to the House, this act is still undergoing amendments. Negotiations may result in a stablecoin bill, a market structure bill, or no law whatsoever. The commission will continue to operate under existing Wyoming law. Again, reflecting that statute is statute, and we're not, you know, we're obviously looking at and discussing on a monthly basis everything that's happening in DC. It is not applicable to us at this current time. Any questions?
Questions? I hear none. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a number of comments here about things like a two-day redemption period or, you know, for issuance of WIST, which we acknowledge isn't, isn't, is in the rules as we've drafted them, but I do want to note that that is when we talk about leveraging the traditional financial systems rails to confirm the settlement of funds. So for example, I've suggested a response here. The two-day convention proposed is to permit the time needed for the traditional banking system to confirm settlement of U.S. dollars, which is required before token issuance to ensure one-to-one backing of the trust account. It should also be noted that two days is defined as a ceiling, not standard operations. Distribution of Wyoming stable tokens or blockchain networks is functionally instantaneous following confirmed settlement of USD. So what we don't want to have here is, this is essentially a double check, triple check in some instances, that we're not issuing Wyoming stable tokens until we know we have those dollars in hand. If we get, you know, a pending invoice for a million dollars or a million dollar purchase of tokens, we issue them, and then something happens to that purchase, and it's revoked or rescinded in some way, we've now broken our one-to-one backing, and we're not going to do that. So that's the suggested response there. Any questions?
Questions? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman, this goes to the DeFi question. So there is a concern that Wyoming stable tokens circulation, specifically on decentralized or DeFi platforms, may not agree to the terms and conditions that are being proposed. Again, acknowledging that terms and conditions is a separate document but referenced in our rules, the suggested response would be, the proposed terms of use and any other key policy that governs WIST, e.g., statute, risk disclosures, et cetera, will be embedded in the metadata of Wyoming stable tokens. So said policies travel with each Wyoming stable token and apply to their use whether on centralized or decentralized exchanges or any token holder's self-custodied wallet. So essentially, we have these tokens, the code that governs them, you could add links and references to those agreements we have. We do intend to have those on our website, which our chief information security officer, Keith Lawhorn, is working on as we speak, and we will just, those will try, again, travel with the token, so they'll always be there, and then yours, under the law, essentially. Same, if you have a dollar in your wallet, you're, and you use that in an illicit way, you're under U.S. law, right?
Questions, comments? All right.
Excellent. There was one grammatical change that they caught. There was a repeated use of the word or in Section, Chapter three, Section E, Romanate four. We have or, or emphasis added on that one, and I would suggest that we proactively make that non-substantive change and remove the repeated or, which I have done in the package of rules that has been provided today. So that's, that was a quick one.
And I think Ms. Monger would tell us that that's fine to do, so if there is no objection, confirmed by acclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And that would be it for the totality of public comment received. So I did include in the package, everyone has a copy of the rules. Obviously, those don't include the changes we'd make to Chapter one, Section four, again, Romanettes five and six, as well as subsection D, which is the duplicate which we're going to revise to contain Commissioner Rosinas' wardings about actions taken by the director will be presented at the next meeting, and we'll make sure we capture that language word for word. But what I'd like to do is adopt a final copy of the reserves management rules to undergo regular rulemaking as drafted or as amended by non-substantive changes, which I believe is where we're at. And then I will go ahead to file all of these docs with the Secretary of State's office and take the procedure from there.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
Commissioner Wallace does have a hand up. Apologies.
Commissioner Wallace?
Thank you, Chairman. I did have one question for Anthony as far as the comments regarding onboarding the service providers and what procedures that would entail, and I know that that, we kind of talked about adding policies in further detail for that, but I guess just from my own understanding, as far as the KYC or KYB, whatever, I'm assuming those rules will be in compliance with the Bank Secrecy Act or Patriot Act or whatever rule would apply to that. Could you help me out and confirm whether that's the case or not?
Through the chair, Commissioner Wallace, the short answer is yes, that is correct. To be slightly more specific, again, we do have the Know Your Business policy drafted. A draft copy of that was provided to the commissioners at our last meeting. That is kind of one of the top three priority docs for us to present at the meeting on July 17th, because we'll need that in place to go and start onboarding some of the distribution partners and so forth. But yes, essentially, we are, by virtue of having distribution of the Wyoming stable token take place through kind of a reseller model, again, those licensed service providers, we need to make sure that they are in compliance with their own frameworks, whether that's KYC, AML, BSA, make sure they have the appropriate MTLs, whichever jurisdiction they're in. That's all work that we are doing as we speak, and again, looking to get a copy of that circulated to the commission as a draft, probably within the next 10 days-ish, give or take, ahead of the commission meeting on the 17th.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think that would certainly address their questions about the procedures that we're using to onboard the LSPs. Is that, would you agree with that?
Through the chair, Commissioner Wallace, that, yes, that is, that is my perspective to the extent that I did cite in the proposed suggested comments, pardon, suggested responses to these comments, I did specifically cite that KYB document because I believe that's going to give us the coverage that some of these commenters are looking for.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adopt the final rules with the non-substantive changes that we have discussed.
Well done. Is there support for Commissioner Pope's motion?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Rosinas. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nays? That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the commissioners. We will move forward on this with those brief edits and take it from there. We'll also reply back to our commenters to make sure that they understand the actions we've taken specifically. I will revert back to our agenda very quickly. All that to say, we have our next regular meeting, as I've noted a few times during this conversation, on July 17th, where the focus will be on getting our documentation approved, both, well, specifically the, the token management, the KYB documents and the licensed service provider agreements. And then those will be the three priority docs for us. And then beyond that, there's the other documents that we talked about and socialized during our last discussion as well, including things like the finance and accounting policy that Mr. Saldana is putting together. We then have booked the special meeting on August 4th. That one is meant to be a placeholder so that if there is any other feedback, comments, questions on policies that must be approved before we issue the token, we have a backstop to accomplish that. And then again, we are expecting a potential launch of the Wyoming stable token on August 20th, taking part as part, taking place as part of the Wyoming Blockchain Symposium occurring on August 18th through 21st in Jackson. As this is a special meeting, we typically do not have public comment on these. Also, we've just finished a public comment period, so we want to make sure we've remained everything inside of that 45 day period. And we are also about 15 minutes over time anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Director. Any?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say real quickly, because this will maybe be my last chance to do it, that while the rules and the policies are important, remember that the commission is in fact, you know, you're delegating your authority to the staff. So if there's ever any reporting that you want, if there's ever anything that you want to direct the commission to do, regardless of whether that's in a policy or a rule, you always have the authority to do that. And so I just wanted to make sure as we're having those conversations, that you're keeping that in your mind, that it's not only your right, but your obligation to make sure that you're overseeing these things. And so to the extent that you want reporting or you want some sort of information, you can always ask for that. It doesn't have to be in your rules that you can. So I just wanted to make sure that was out there.
Thank you, Ms. Monger. And I, I want to thank you for your work at the attorney general's office and, and here as well. So further, further comments? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second, and I noticed that Auditor Racine's quickly moved into that.
I'm also the first in the buffet line, always.
Yeah. All right. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.